Hey, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting of May 12th, 2025 to order. My name is Deanna Rincima, counselor and chair of the General Business and Finance Committee. I'd like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given and if assistance is required, please see the legislative committee coordinator. Deanna. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please ensure your cell phone is on silent or turned off. And lastly, the town of Lincoln committee of the whole meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the closed captioning button in the bottom right of the video. Members of committee are here in attendance. We have all staff in attendance. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, do any members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? We have no statutory public meetings this evening. We are now considering the consent agenda inclusive of museum advisory committee minutes of February 20th, 2025, heritage advisory committee minutes of March 6th, 2025, and joint fire services advisory committee minutes of April 16th, 2025. Would any member of the committee like to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss? There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Councilor Pachariva that all items listed under the consent agenda for Monday, May 12th be adopted as recommended, being the museum advisory committee minutes of February 20th, 2025, the heritage advisory committee minutes of March 6th, 2025, and the joint fire services advisory minutes of April 16th, 2025. I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. The item is now open.
It's not coming up for me, and I don't know if anybody else is experiencing the same thing.
Can I get your vote verbally, Chair?
In favor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now begin the general business and finance agenda. We have a delegation this evening from Hamilton Health Sciences staff regarding updates pertaining to the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital redevelopment. In attendance to present, we have Bruce Squires, site executive of West Lincoln Memorial Hospital, president of McMaster Children's Hospital, and vice president of Women's and Children's Health, and Aaron Levo, vice president, people, culture, and communications. So, please go ahead, if you want to go up to the podium. Any luck turning that mic on?
There we go.
Thank you for that.
Good evening. Good evening, Your Honor, councilors. It's really a pleasure to join you here today. As mentioned, I'm Bruce Squires, and as of now, a few months ago, I'm the site executive for West Lincoln Memorial Hospital at Hamilton Health Sciences, also the president at McMaster Children's Hospital, and the vice president of Women's and Children's Health. And in that role, have been affiliated with West Lincoln for the past four years as well, specifically looking at the women's and children's program. As you can see, I'm not with Aaron Levo at this point. Unfortunately, as can happen, he is stuck in traffic, hopefully off the 403 now, but still on the QEW. And I know he's disappointed to not be able to join you because, really, for us, I think this is an exciting time, and so, really, a pleasure to be able to come to you and first and foremost, to say thank you again for your commitment, and I know it is over many, many years/decades, and your support to the site redevelopment for West Lincoln Memorial Hospital. And today, I'm able to share some updated timelines, which is obviously, you know, most exciting, the hospital opening plans, and again, to have that chance to say thank you. I do have a slide deck, and there are some words for a few of the slides, and then, probably most interestingly, there's some pictures. So you'll get to see a little bit of where we're going. But we did want to just start off and kind of highlight, you know, where are we now in the course of this really major redevelopment? So, you know, key pieces around the project status is mechanical and electrical. So all the inner workings, we're at the point now of testing. So we're really getting ready to ensure that we are integrated and that we have, you know, ideal, high-quality performance. Furniture fixtures, so the interior of the building, deliveries have started, so we're starting to receive those pieces and starting to set them up within the walls of the hospital. In terms of the whole interior, we have kind of the project responsible team assessing that interior, making sure that we, if we have any deficiencies, that they're going to be addressed well in advance. And we have started staff training, so training them to the new systems in the building. So probably timelines, right? That's the important piece. So substantial completion, and it's something that unless you're in the world of redevelopment, that may not be a term that resonates, certainly from any of our team, it's the first time they've heard that. But that really means when the major construction is done and the builders can essentially start to hand over the building to us, to begin to actually bring in not only our systems and our tools, but of course, our people. And so essentially, keys are going to be handed over on or about July 21st, and that's a pretty firm date. It could move by a day or two, but that's still not the key one, right? Like, that's not the actual day when care begins to be delivered. Projection right now would put us at the end of October, and you can see there, October 27th, that is the Monday. I learned right when I started in this new role, and I read a little bit of the history, that that is exactly 76 days after the opening of the existing hospital. Seventy-six days, 76 years. You corrected me there. Seventy-six years. So it was October 27th, 1949, when the original hospital opened. So certainly, my goal would be to hold us to that date, because I think that would be really cool, if we can move in on that date. And of course, as we get closer, we'll know whether that will be a workable date. So I know you've seen updates on where we're going, but let's just remind. So, you know, core here, and we'll see it in the picture, the new hospital is about 80% bigger than the existing hospital, and we'll talk in a minute, really, you know, what that means. We're moving to 55 beds, including six birthing suites, the three ORs, and one procedure room. All of our rooms are single patient. And I can tell you, with responsibility of McMaster Children's Hospital, with 235 beds, only a few of which are single patients, the difference that makes for infection prevention and control is just, it's really immeasurable, but really, for the experience of patients and their families, right? Who can be able to have more private time together, more of an opportunity for a restful stay. So that's a big reason why it's so big, and it is a massive difference in the experience that our patients will receive. See, it's been built with a sustainable green design. Let me just say a tiny bit more about the programs and services. So we have something called the post-construction operating plan, so that's short-formed as PCOP, and it describes the process over the initial, up to five to six years, following the building of a new hospital and the transition. All that just provides for us how we ramp up services and funding flows. But what we're creating is a hospital that moves over all of our current and existing services and provides the space for expansion, particularly in our outpatient services, but also with 11 more beds than we currently have, as I said, all of them being private patient rooms, focusing on labor and delivery for a second, because it means so much for our community. We're going to have six, what are called labor, delivery, recovery, and postpartum rooms. So that's a suite that allows the entirety of a birthing visit to happen together with both the delivering parent and with the child being able to stay during their delivery. Again, at McMaster, we don't have that. We don't have that opportunity. So it's a great place, a great development for the group. You see the diagnostic surgical services there. I'll also highlight, of course, that we're going to have up-to-date medical equipment and technology, and it's really up to current standards, but it puts us in a place to be able to grow for systems of the future. I'm going to stop there, and we'll maybe give time if we go back to that. This is probably the thing that you're most interested in. I wanted to start with an aerial view, because it gives you a little bit of a sense of the size. So on the picture on the right, in the lower left-hand corner, that's the existing hospital. So you can see the difference in the footprint, and yeah, it takes up more of the view, but it is so much better equipped to provide care and services. There's a little bit of the inside, so a little bit of a sense of what the walls and flooring and the interior of the building will feel like. You can see it's very bright and open, and obviously newer, and if you've walked around the halls of the existing hospital recently, you know, we still have the challenges with the occasional leak and the occasional challenge with what might be in the walls. Well, this is up front and right in your face how new it is. Inpatient room, couple features there. Every room has a beautiful window view, which is great, and you'll see that there is an individual washroom in every one of the rooms. And again, just critical for patient experience, but also, of course, for infection prevention and control and for keeping folks healthy. I'll also show you a little bit of the, kind of the more public part of the hospital. So that's actually, on the left is one of the, we often call them nursing stations in existing hospitals, but that's a staff workstation right in the heart of the largest ward, the medical surgical ward, which has 40 inpatient beds, really, in many cases, for some of the sick spokes that we'll care for. And to the right is one of the clinical reception areas in our outpatient areas, and you can see how far along we are right now and what it's going to look like in only a few months more. So, yeah, so what's coming? This is really the, I think, the exciting part of the timeline. July 21st was when we are going to get those keys to the building. And the other end of this little slide, we're targeting a patient move-in on or about October 27th. But there's things that happen in between there, and that's really about giving the community, giving council, and other forms of government, and other stakeholders. It's a chance to be able to see and hopefully to celebrate the hospital that we've jointly created, but certainly you have played such an amazing leadership role. So the HHS team, and Aaron's team in particular, will look to connect with you in the coming days and weeks, where we hope we can set up the right time to come and tour the hospital again before we open, so a specific tour. And then, you know, what are the ways for this council and the town of Lincoln to join us in targeted and specific celebrations as well as in the open? And I think we're, I know I'm really keen and open to do whatever we can. So, Madam Mayor, I'm going to stop there. I'll just, again, you know, thank you. Thank you for your vision that I've learned about, of, again, I say decades, because I think that's a fair statement, but certainly as well over the last few years as we've put this together, and now we're starting to see it really take life. So thanks very much, and I'm happy to welcome any questions and certainly any comments or feedback.
Thank you, Bruce. I do have a question from Councilor Timmers, and then Councilor Brené, after that. Go ahead, Councilor Timmers.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through to the presenter, thank you for being here tonight, and this is extremely exciting news, and to see those dates and moving patients into the new building. And I have to tell you a funny story. Just recently, I had someone reach out to me and say, "Are you sure we're actually getting the hospital?" And I said, "Just take a drive-by and you'll see it." So it's been a long time coming. So just a couple of quick questions. So around staffing, what is that going to look like, and will there be enough staff to open on opening day and move patients in? And what does that look like?
Again, there we go. Oh, thanks so much for the question, Counselor, and I agree with, to your first point. It's so great to actually be able to point to something, because then there's no question about it, there's a new hospital there, you can see it. You know, I can tell you that staffing, you know, across the health system, thank goodness, has really improved over the last couple of years. It was the worst we'd ever seen in, certainly in my 30 years, just going back four years, but we're really getting to the place where, in most areas, we are able to recruit and retain. And I'll tell you, even more specific to West Lincoln, for the last couple of postings that we put forward, we've had into the 60s and 70s as a number of applicants. I think that's a product of this community, for sure, but also of the coming of the new hospital. So we're looking quite good for being able to fully staff all of the services as of day one, meeting all of our existing demand. Now, as we ramp up over time, then we will likely see some additional growth, but again, projections now suggest we're going to be in a really good place to, as soon as we need new staff, bring them on. So there's no guarantees in healthcare, and certainly there's no guarantees in our, you know, our political, economic, all the environments that you face as acutely as anyone, but right now, we're feeling really good. I'm optimistic.
That's very good. That's good news, and I'm sure many people would be thrilled to be able to work in a brand-new, beautiful.
That's what we're hearing, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Timmers. Now, Councilor Brené, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Rincima. Through you to the presenter. Thank you very much, Bruce, for being here this evening. I'm glad Councilor Timmers asked that question, because I had the privilege to represent this council for 10 years, from 2014 to 2023, on the Community Advisory Council. So certainly sat through many meetings in the bowels of the West Lincoln Hospital, arm-wrestling with Rob McKaisak and Kelly Campbell and everyone else at HHS, trying to make sure that, you know, we were continuing to move this along. And during COVID, you know, those conversations were always surrounding, okay, what's happening? The OR is being closed. We don't have an anesthesiologist. You know, operations were being closed. So, you know, the conversations around those times were always, okay, we're going to have this wonderful, beautiful hospital we've been waiting for for decades, but are we going to be able to staff it when we turn the keys over? So it's good to hear your comments and your thought process, but in your memo, you talk about how this is going to be ramped up. And in your memo, you state that services and staffing needs will be adjusted gradually in response to, you know, the best use of available resources, but you also say that opportunities for service growth will potentially happen over time. I'm wondering if you could, you know, look in your crystal ball and talk about what potential service growth opportunities you see at this new hospital?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for the question, Counselor. And let me, you know, maybe I'll just start again to highlight that we're feeling so much more optimistic in terms of our ability to recruit and retain, which has been, that was actually one of our biggest challenges really over the last five years. The place, for sure, where, again, like you, the greatest level of uncertainty is around government funding for operations, particularly the provincial government. So that's where the careful and the cautious is critical, and so that's where you'll hear that in my memo. And that's fortunately for us, given the way PCOP works, I think that is more about the opportunities for future growth than it is about what used to be, can we even meet up with, meet existing demand? Can we meet what's needed right now? We're in a very good place to meet existing demand and to grow gradually as the opportunities come. That's first and foremost for me, that's growing our statistical services. So, and right now, we're able to do everything that's needed in the community, but it will be as more families decide to have their children in the local community, and so we're well set up for that. Another area that we'll want to continue to explore is, you know, what are the low-risk and perhaps higher-volume surgical activities that can take place in that really great OR area that we've built with the three ORs and the procedure room? So, you know, crystal ball, where are we going to, those will be some of the areas. It'll look at some of those opportunities again with, I described them low-volume, low-risk, higher-volume services. So it's something that's appropriate to be done in a community hospital, where you don't necessarily need to have the tertiary-level support. So that's an area. We'll also be looking for the additional funding to allow us to utilize our diagnostic imaging even more extensively. The town, you're familiar with, you know, sometimes you look at opportunities to go into the evenings for services, because that's what works better for your community or even overnight. So that's the kind of thing we'll start to explore. But right off the bat, we're just going to get it up and running, really looking to mirror and match the demand that the community is facing now. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if I could continue with a couple other questions?
Go ahead, Councilor Brené.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Through you, Bruce, I think you guys have done a marvelous job managing the parking. Hasn't been easy. I think you kind of fell into a bit of a Lucky Charms bowl of cereal when Kohl's Florist opened up and you were able to use that whole parking. But what is the plan, and how long will that period take between the demolition of the existing facility and the construction of the new parking, so that people that are using the services of the new hospital are not going to be having to look for 17 different places to park?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Counselor, again, for the question, and I'm going to apologize that I don't have the details, but I will commit to get those right back to you in terms of what that looks like more specifically. I know that the goal would be, and I think you're aware of this, that as we take possession of the new building, move the services over, then when, as soon as possible, the time is right, then we'll be in a position to demolish the existing hospital and put up the parking. But your question is around the specifics in that time period and when that time period... So if I could, I will come back to, I will ensure I will come back to counsel with kind of the more specifics that I hear you asking on that. I know that, again, we've been looking to contract with available, you know, willing opportunities in the area as we are now. We're necessary using shuttle services, prioritizing patients and families close to the hospital, but that's at a high level. I know you're looking for more details. So I apologize, but I'll come back, I'll make sure that we bring that back to you.
Thanks very much.
That's your questions, Councilor Brené?
Yeah, I'll maybe come back later, but go ahead.
Okay. Councilor McElitt, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to our delegation. So thank you very much for this info. Exciting news. Hospitals don't get built quickly. There's no doubt about that. So the question I had, a lot has changed since we were talking about building this hospital with respect to growth, with respect to population expectations placed upon, say, Grimsby, West Lincoln, as well as ourselves. We have 55 beds, and I don't know if that's a lot of beds or not. I'm not sure what the current needs are, and I know we based those needs once upon a time, probably five, six years ago. Do you see this hospital, how long do you see this hospital being functional for in servicing the growth targets that we're expecting? Similar to a school, you know, schools say, we're good, we're good, and then next thing you know, there's portables being put up. So are we worried about the longevity of this hospital with respect to servicing the growth?
I'll figure this out eventually. Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, anyone who works in healthcare right now does worry about capacity. You heard that I have responsibility for another hospital, McMaster Children's, and affiliated with HHS with seven other sites. I worry least about that here as we're moving in. We have an ability to handle surges, including with adaptation of the rooms. We are continuously working, and I was talking with the mayor earlier, with our primary care partners and with folks like long-term care, to ensure that we're flowing our patients as we need. Many times, the capacity pressure is not from a patient who needs to be in the hospital. We have enough beds for patients who need to be in the hospital. We just need to continue to work with the community and ensure that we're better, we're all better at getting folks home, getting them into other areas, such as long-term care. So I worry about it, but I worry less here than just about any other site in the province right now, because we're well set up. So that's sort of, has to be contained, because healthcare is still challenging, but I'm feeling good.
Fair enough. And through you, I just, you know, there's a reference made to the old building.
Yeah.
Look at the size of the old building, but that was built in 1949. I don't know if there was nearly the number of population relative to that size building. That building might have been actually a large building, servicing a small number of people, relatively speaking.
Absolutely.
And the next question I have is with respect to demolition, or is there a possibility to further expand this hospital, should there be that unexpected population surge and expectation that, you know, we got to, we have to see, we have to see people that, you know, are hoping to be serviced? Is there a plan for that?
Yeah, thank you, thanks very much. You make a good point, great point. I really want to highlight, you know, population is certainly significantly different from what it was in 1949, but what is incredibly different is the way we care for people. So in 1949, if you had a baby, then you and the baby would stay in the hospital for, in some cases, two weeks. If you had a minor surgery, like an appendix, you might be looking at a hospital stay of 20 days. So the, yeah, so fortunately, you need a lot fewer beds per capita than you used to need. You need to have them look different, and they do look different now, again, particularly that notion of old wards that used to have 20 people on them, right? That would just kind of be housed there, and now we're moving to single rooms. So, yeah, fortunately, it is a different world than it was... So, yeah, fortunately, it's, it is a, a different, a different world than, than it was, than it used to be. I think that you're, you're right though. You know, the, the, the reality is that we can't know what it's going to look like in, in even for sure in 10 or 20 years. So you're in a better place if you have the space to be able to, to grow or to change. Sometimes that's up, sometimes that's out. Fortunately, we do have space to go out. Parking lot, but that doesn't mean that you can't do something different in the future with a parking lot. So I think we're better than a lot of places. We're, we're well set up that if in the future there was a need to make renovations or changes to the hospital, it would be possible.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. I, I know it's impossible to know.
It's, yeah.
Just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to be having to look at expanding this hospital before we even finish paying off this hospital. That's, that's why I want to make sure that.
Well, and.
It's suitable.
Yeah.
Not just today, but 20, 30 years from now, 30 years.
If, if I could, just, just to highlight, that is true and it, it's something every single new hospital in the, in the province worries about it in all, all faces. I came from Ottawa as we were building a new, a new children's treatment center and there's no question that I talked to the folks today and they're worried, oh, is it going to be big enough? We're going to have to do things differently in order to be able to accommodate. And that, that one went even quicker in five years. So it's a real worry. You are absolutely worried, correct, to be, and I think it's appropriate for Counsel to be worried about it like us. But I'll just say that I think we're, we're, we're better positioned than a lot.
Okay. Are you good, Counselor McIllic? Okay, Counselor Russell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to, to Mr. Squires and forgive me, I missed Counselor Renee's first question because I was rebooting. But just in case he didn't ask this, I'm just wondering, now that you're getting close to completion, how are you looking in terms of budget? Are we on target? Will we be able to cover off everything, including the demolition with the, the original budget or is there a reforecast? Just wondering where we are standing.
No one is saying to me that we have a significant challenge with respect to the, the, the on budget. And in terms of the on time, I, I know we had that, that delay that takes us to these timelines. That was really a, a supply chain is, is mostly what's being pointed to there, but everyone, everything suggests we're on, we're, we're, we're on time. But in terms of the budget, no one's saying to me on the finance side that we are, we are off target and we have a challenge. So I'm taking that as good news and I think I can, I can share that, that we're, we're in a good place.
Okay, and I will take that as good news as well. Through you, Madam Chair. It gets one of those things, again, with projects going over this long a period of time, again, pre-COVID, again, the world has changed in terms of what infrastructure costs. So I'm glad to hear that there are no significant red flags at this point. So again, I look forward to the tour sometime early this fall and again, much success to you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, maybe I should, I should just, as you said, kind of right, right now, highlight that certainly as we talk to the project team, we keep highlighting, we are very, I guess fortunate that, you know, all our contracts and our, our, our ships, shipments were in place before, for example, our, our trade war right now. So we're in a, and, and some of the province's measures with respect to contracting. So we're, we're fortunate that we, the team does not feel we're at risk there. So that's a good, good point. So I definitely like to welcome my colleague, Aaron Livo, as I've been, been standing.
Counselor Russell, you good? Okay. Welcome, Mr. Evo, Livo, sorry. And Mayor Easton is next. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, it's, I know what it feels like to open up a new building. It's pretty exciting. But there's some things about this that are really different, I think. And one of them is that there, there was an opportunity for a whole lot of really unfortunate norms to develop before we ever got to the point where the hospital was approved. And so it's hard to judge, and I think the Counselor's questions are really valuable. It's hard to know how easy it will be to either not bring those across, which I think is going to be hard not to, and expect that there's going to be a lot of efficiency just because it's new. Can either of you talk about that? Because I mean, the whole onboarding situation is going to be, it's going to be quite interesting. And I've been in the hospital for enough hours in the last few months to hear how the staff are caring for patients and how the technology is being used. And then after the fact, looking at how the charting system, how that whole piece is coming in. And I consider all of this to be so vital to the operation of what we've invested in. And I, I think, you know, we'll never have another chance to spend a few minutes asking you about these questions, but what about some of the things that you've had to put up with and how you'll, you know, will the physical plant just get rid of that stuff or those attitudes or, you know, magically?
Maybe, maybe, thanks so much for the question, Your Honor. Maybe I'll, I'll just highlight that, you know, as we talk to our teams, there is that combination of this is so exciting to be moving into a new building where so much is going to be different. But then juxtaposed against, we're moving into a new building where we're going to do exactly what we've been doing diligently for the entarities of our careers, which is caring for patients and families to the, to the, to the really best of our abilities. And, and truly, like you hear that from, from teams, they're sort of the, oh, this is really, really exciting. Oh, I'm just so great. I'm, you know, it's just kind of going to continue. So, well, what are the differences there? Certainly there is the, the, the space being a bit different and in some cases, there's some slight differences to the technologies. So we've started to train folks. We brought on training champions really to try and, and that's what a training champion is essentially, it's someone who said, again, step out of my frontline patient care role and really focus on, on, on developing the material for my colleagues and then spending time with them. And we use the term at the elbow, kind of showing them, watching them as they learn what, what might be different. So, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, and, and I, I think we, we're doing a, a, a good job in, in helping folks so those little pieces that are different, that actually aren't that much, but those little pieces that are different, they've had the, the, the opportunity to, to give them a try. We're lucky that as a, as an entire organization, we went through the implementation of our electronic health record almost three years ago, it'll be three years ago in, in June, and that was, that was a massive, massive, massive change in how, in folks, how folks had to practice. And so many of these folks have already been through that and they've, they've kind of learned how to, how to adapt. The last thing I'll say, and I'll turn it to, to Aaron, but we've, we've talked a little bit already about this notion of ramp up, right? And, and the reason why fortunately over, from, from learning, the province really emphasizes that you ramp up gradually is so that you can, can have that opportunity to get to exactly what you talked about, Mayor. So we'll, we'll start off a little bit slower, particularly in the first couple of weeks as we ramp up and get people comfortable. So I'm feeling good. I know the teams are feeling good about that transition. Aaron, anything you'd add?
I'd just maybe add, you know, it'd be great when we'll have time, less time spent on workarounds and the facility working against you. So in that essence, we'll be able to put that time and energy into things that are more advantageous to the people we serve, which I think everybody's mind is going to when Bruce talks about the excitement. It's like, hey, imagine the day when we won't have to do this. Equipment won't be in the hallway. We won't have to worry about leaky pipes and wires and things of that nature. So all that energy goes into a machine that's really well tuned for patient care already. So it's going to be a good thing.
That's good. So we're forcing you to provide, you, you're doing a great job, but we're really forcing you to add a little bit more and a little bit more, which is good because people are watching this and, and we want people to start to feel some of that excitement. So if they give you the same budget, which wouldn't surprise me, then you will have a deficit and then they'll force you to make sure that you justify that and justify it and justify it. So I, I don't think that's unrealistic unless, Aaron, you've really been doing a lot of dreaming. Do you think you'll get the same budget or a new budget?
Well, we'll make best use of the resources we have. To Bruce's point about the, the ramp up though, I mean, we, there's some invariables, right? It's exciting in the region to have a new facility and families will use it. And so we'll watch what happens. And that's sort of the agreement with the ministry and every new hospital that opens in the province, it's a process to understand and staff up against the volumes, against what's happening in the facility because you don't know. What was is not what it's going to be.
That's a good, I, I just wanted Counselor Russell to hear that because that is, I think, the realistic answer. It's not a bad answer. It's just realistic. It's the way they, they do things. So reconciling what's happening now and the pressure that you're feeling against what the demands might be in the future. For me, a lot of the things that are happening now and that have been happening, that's just because of the way we did things. So what happens when the pressure starts to come into this new system because you can't change things all that quickly? So we don't want to find out in the community that there's delays, that you can't have surgery done, that you can't do this, that there's a long delay for this or that or the other thing. How will we, how will we respond to that? What will be the future response to that situation repeating itself? Because if there's a way that we can begin to think about that now, not the day you open, but if it's in your mind to begin thinking about how things can be done differently and in different places, is it on your mind and will, have, have, will you be coming into the community possibly to talk about how things can be done differently?
Yeah, maybe, let me, let me start if I could, if I could, Mayor, and then maybe, Aaron, you can, you can speak from a broader perspective as well. But right, like in the moment right now, fortunately, Your Honor, the, the teams are focused on that every single day and, and you've seen it. We've actually, despite our growth in, in demand, the, the work of the emergency department team in particular have been able to drive down our wait lists, been able to drive down the, the time that folks are, after being admitted and decision made, we need to stay in hospital, that they have been stuck in, in, in the emergency department. So they're working on, on, on flow within the hospital, working on a better job of, and I mentioned it earlier, the, the number of patients that sometimes are ready for care back in their own homes or for care in, in another, another setting. We're making those connections earlier in just, in an anticipatory way and, and, and moving that along. So that innovation, and those are pieces of it, I, I think is already a huge focus. And you and I talked a little bit, again, about the province's focus on primary care. That will be a massive piece for, for this community and you're starting from such a great spot in terms of the level of primary care engagement and the enthusiasm of the primary care teams to work collaboratively with us, us as a hospital. That kind of innovation is what we have to put in place to demonstrate that, yeah, we're doing everything we can, government, to deal with, with our demand pressures. Now, there may be things that also need to be done from a, a government relations perspective. Maybe I'll look to Aaron there.
Well, I'd just say, look, it's incredibly good timing, a new facility, but it doesn't alleviate the context in which we're operating today. We still have procedural backlogs. We have a surgical backlog we're contending with as a, as a region, as a province. So it will function more effectively in that, in that context, but those things are still very much present. We're two years in to a 15-year demographic shift that's the largest we'll ever experience. So being conscious and alert to that and doing things differently where it's possible and being responsive to the situations, what we're very good at. I'd add too, that working in partnership in the community, because it can't always be about hospitals all the time, so how in fact we partner with the town of Lincoln and with others to try and get upstream, get out into the community and reserve the hospital capacity for what it's intended for, its primary purpose. Like that is the doing things differently that we all want to see. But it's really great timing to be on, bringing online a new facility in the context in which we're in. So make no mistake, we will have some increases in performance. We will also have some wait times and that's just a result of where we are as a system and as a province, but our commitment's to work through it.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, to have Dr. Squires and Aaron here who's been holding our hand for quite a long time now. He'll be happy to see that rope released, I'm sure. And of course, we're, we're more than proud of what's, of the investments that we've made across the region and, and we know that the work that you're doing right now is, there's going to be a big payoff. So thank you so much. It's just too good to be true. It's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Counselor Renee back in the queue. Go ahead, Counselor Renee.
Thank you, Chair. Renjima, I just, I just couldn't allow Aaron to drive an hour and a half out here without allowing me to give him a little bit of erasmus test. But seriously, Aaron, good to see you again. You've always been right beside us every step of the way. You know, when we were down in Ottawa and meeting with the ministry, you parachute your in, yourself in for a one-hour meeting and back on the plane to the airport and back to Hamilton. And, you know, those meetings, when you look back now, were really fruitful in making sure that the province, we, we had, we had their, their ear and we, and they heard our voice. So you were always there, along with Leslie Gillis and Kelly Campbell and everybody else. So top drawer. You were always there.
Still standing down, Counselor. Keep going.
It's been a real joy.
You did, and you know, I'm sure when you came to some of those public meetings, you, you didn't know whether you were coming to a public meeting or a lynching. But you survived, you survived them all and what do they say? The best, the best will stand. And, you know, you weren't here to, to hear Mr. Squire speak, but, and we joke about this all the time, I am a repeat customer of HHS now three times. I just had a knee surgery two weeks ago. And I have to say, you know, what you're, what you're saying here tonight, I can, I can stand beside it because I had surgery during, during COVID, which wasn't the best experience when everybody was wanting out of the health sector. Now you fast track the epic, the record-keeping and the morale at the, at the Jervinsky Hospital two weeks ago was unbelievable. Everyone just speaking raves about everything that was happening across the organization. So whatever you're doing, you're doing well. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Renee. I think that was appropriate, good to hear, some great comments and kudos for, for both of you. Counselor Timmers, would you mind, Vice Chair Timmers, would you mind taking the chair? I have just a couple of brief questions because nobody else is in the queue.
There we go. We did it. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Through you to Chair Renjima. Go ahead.
Okay, just a couple of brief questions. When you're talking about electronic health records, is that dovetail?
So at, it, it is the, the same background as dovetail, like the, the toll system is referred to, is known as Epic, so that's the brand name. And it's referred to as dovetail at, at, at St. Joe's Healthcare, Hamilton. So we, we still call it Epic. The two systems can talk to each other. They're not, they're not the same core instance, but essentially we have good interoperability with St. Joe's and that is the, the same core, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had is in your presentation, you had a picture of one of those private rooms. There was a sofa there. Is that, so is that something that a family member could sleep on?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That's right, exactly. So, so the, the nice thing about a private room is it allows that level of, of family involvement.
Yeah. Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Timmers.
You're welcome. Back to you.
And I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I want to thank both of you very much for presenting and, and giving us the opportunity to ask questions. And, and really, it's a bit of a celebration right now and we're looking very much forward to the tour of the hospital and the, the big day. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Bye. Okay, sorry, just trying to find where we are here. There being no further discussion for this item, I have a motion moved by Counselor McIllic that committee receive and file for information, the following delegation regarding the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital, Bruce Squires and Aaron Livo, Hamilton Health Sciences.
Thank you. The vote is now open.
The vote is now open.
Mine's still not popping up, so I'll vote in favor.
In favor? Thank you.
Yeah.
And that vote is now closed and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. And now item 7.2 on the agenda, we will now consider a report regarding the 2022 to 2026 council priorities midterm progress update. The CIO will provide introductory comments. CIO Krokopoulos, please go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair, and to members of council as well. As we reach the midpoint of the council term, and I know we're a little bit past it, but when we started putting together this midterm priorities report, we were about there. It is an opportunity to reflect on the progress that we've made and ensure alignment between council's strategic vision and the operational direction of the town. It is something we typically haven't done, so we've been doing strategic plans for a number of years, a number of terms. This is the first midterm priority report. I thought it important to be in front of council, just to share some of this information with you. I encourage you to ask any of the CLT members that are here, any questions that you may have. As you can tell, we've worked closely across departments to identify where momentum exists, to align to existing plans, make any strategic pivots where they're necessary, and also react to where new opportunities are emerging. Think about housing, infrastructure modernization, climate adaptation, and just the partnerships with other levels of government. It seems like very regularly we're getting new announcements and so we have to pivot to ensure that we're able to respond to those. It isn't a static checklist, so I wouldn't want council to look at it that way. It's supposed to be a living document, a living guide, a resource. We use it like we do with most of the documents we have to inform budget recommendations and support council decision-making. Where council's direction evolves, such as through new policy areas or community partnerships, as I mentioned earlier, staff are committed to adapting and responding with clear and implementable strategies. Finally, I want to recognize council's commitment to advancing the meaningful community outcomes that are highlighted in this report. Your support, collaboration, and the clarity that you give us in providing that direction are keys to success. So I encourage you to ask any questions you have. Our CLT is here and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. CIO. I don't see anybody in the queue yet, but that could change in the next five, four, three, two, one. No offense taken. Okay, so that must be a good sign. Very good sign. Yes, I would take it that way, absolutely. Okay, so there being no...
The mayor's in.
There you go. Mayor Easton, go ahead, please.
Well, we're not going to let a benchmark go by without comment, but besides that, this is hardly something to let fly through and without any acknowledgement. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to go to page three. And under, through you to the CIO, Mr. Krokopoulos, under Progress Highlights, the comment, the second bullet from the bottom of that grouping is new open data and performance dashboards to increase transparency. And I'm just wondering, I don't really see a lot with all of the, what's being reported here. I'm curious about how well our technology stands up to support this. Certainly, the metrics are important. There's no question about it. There's a lot of activity going on, but I'm using this also to look forward to see what we might need to consider in the next budget, the 2026 budget, so that we can really get those dashboards and performance data out to the public.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the mayor. I'll start and I'll let, I think, various staff probably jump in. One of the things, and Director McKay has taken a little bit of a leadership role in pulling this together, we are looking at a number of tools. We are looking at, sorry, we are looking at some tools that we can begin to, I think, utilize. I know Shannon's gone out, she's looked at various benchmark initiatives and various opportunities. We have Speak Up Lincoln, which also includes a lot of data. We're looking at our infrastructure update, which is also on the agenda. So there's a lot of people doing dashboards. Which one works well, which one doesn't work well is something we're looking at. We don't want to put a lot of time, energy, money and resources towards something if it's not going to be utilized. And so it is something that we are working on. GIS is another area that we're probably devoid of in the organization, maybe to the level where we want it to be. And so I think as we move forward with some of these, and you're going to hear a little bit more about asset management and our GIS strategy in the coming weeks and months when we bring that report forward, I think towards the end of June. But it is something that, would I like to be further ahead? Absolutely. I think of open data, something that I know I was talking to this council about and our corporate leadership team almost 10 years ago when I got here. Technology is one of these things that's ever-changing and it is something we need to stay on top of, but it's also something that requires us to put resources, again, time, energy and money towards. And so it is a matter of prioritizing and making sure we're delivering on both what council and the public expects. So if, I'm not sure if Shannon, who's done a little bit of the research on some of those tools and/or Julie, who has oversight of IT, want to make any additional comments.
Thanks to the mayor. So I would just say that this is all also on the radar of the IT Steering Committee and we meet monthly and various aspects that are listed here in the progress highlights are things that we review and those are already on our radar as the CIO has outlined. The GIS and cloud permit definitely will be becoming more available with information to report on and how we build out that open data. That's something that's definitely on my work plan as IT reports to me, but also working with the corporate leadership team also to engage with them.
If I could, Chair, one more comment. I forgot to mention it in my opening comments. You talked about just that engagement or that transparency. Madam Mayor, when you highlight the dashboard, one of the things we are going to try to do and incorporate coming out of this plan is how we communicate this, how we share it more broadly, whether that be in the council newsletters, seeking some feedback and input or other sorts of electronic mediums that we utilize. And so along with this document, there will be an extensive communication outreach strategy as well.
Counselor Pachivu, then Counselor Mikulak would have to come out and then go back in again. And they have, so go ahead.
Thanks very much. Okay, the other, the next question that I have is really on page five. It's under the Drive Economic Potential and Community Well-being, and this is a really important one and we put so much emphasis on this. I don't see any numbers for business growth and I'm wondering what we can, what we might expect, or is that a product of not really having that open data system available yet? Thank you. That's who I was looking for.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you. And Chair, through you to the mayor. Madam Mayor, we are assessing those numbers. As always, things fluctuate when it comes to new businesses opening and some, you know, closing, so it is one that we're tracking and we hope to have that in the final document as well. So it is a number that we are looking for.
Okay, so it'll be, I mean, I don't think it's for us, Madam Chair, that it's so important that we have precise number. We know that businesses come and go, but it would be very interesting to see what kinds of businesses, what kind of businesses are we attracting? I mean, we visited one today that was just absolutely outstanding in what it had to bring in terms of the quality of employees, the skills that were required, as well as the volume and value of the assets. I know that not all businesses have that kind of a profile, but it would be interesting to see what that mix is across the perspective.
And if I can further add, Chair, without a business licensing system, Madam Mayor, and I know we've chatted about this here at the podium before, it is sometimes harder to find that number, because as you know, not all municipalities, or sorry, not all businesses have to come through the municipality to get a license of some sort. So unless there's a big construction or renovation, it may sort of fly a little bit under the radar, but of course, we're always doing our due diligence to find out who we have in the community.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, my last question is from page eight and it comes under the metrics that really fall under the heading of responsible and resilient community, specifically promote a healthy and safe community. I want to take note of the truck safety blitzes and what is being generated in terms of the findings there and the level of risk that this brings to our community. So once again, I don't know whether there's another level of activity that we can engage in with this, but certainly this is keeping a lot of activity that we don't want in our community out. And it's quite shocking to see the number of vehicle, commercial vehicles that are stopped and have substantial problems mechanically. And so I just, if the CIO has a little bit more information that we need to be looking at, is there the need for us to have more cameras? What are we doing in terms of our ultimate analysis with this?
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the mayor. I mean, I think the simple answer, Mayor Easton, is that more cameras result in more success. There is a cost to those cameras and there's a resource that aligns to that. And so I think as we look at this budget and future budgets and continue to work with the province of Ontario on what that cost-sharing agreement may look like in the future, I anticipate us being in front of you through Public Works to have a further conversation on that.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, Counselor Pachivu, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and through you, Mr. Krokopoulos, thank you very much for this report. It's quite eye-opening. So question, and actually question, you know what? I'm going to, you know, there was an old piece in the newspaper, bricks and bouquets. I'm going to throw out a couple bouquets. At the top of page 18, or report, it talks about progress highlights, enhanced digital service portals for permits, payments and to report issues. So I just want to thank all of the staff that was involved in the planning department and the finance department to create this online permitting. Resident asked me about a pool permit. Hey, do I have to go down to Town Hall? Who do I see? I'm like, no, no, it's on the line. And they went on and they said, but we've got an issue with the NPCA. And I said, well, I'm pretty sure that you can upload the permit you have from them. And they were like, oh my God, it was so easy. Easy, easy, easy. So you know what? We hear about red tape, we hear about, you know, problems and all of these kind of things and if that happens, I let you know. But at the same point, kudos, because this is incredible. And this is one of the things that we should be highlighting and telling all of our residents through our social media channels, through our newsletters, through our handouts and through our meetings with them, that this is something that you need, that you can do. You don't need to come to Town Hall. You can do it from the comfort of your own home.
Counselor Pachivu, is there a question?
There is. I just, if we have any more of these, Madam Chairman, coming to alleviate, coming to Town Hall to do business.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't I start, Madam Chair, and if any staff want to jump in, and any specifics in terms of where we're at. Counselor, I would say we're always looking at where we can move, I think, opportunities online. If you look at just the transaction costs of an in-person transaction versus a telephone transaction versus online, you see a substantial decrease in each of those three. We are, you know, understanding the demographics of our community as well, I would suggest it's not like we're, you know, deviating and moving away from one. We do want to have opportunities for people to come in to do those sorts of things, but I know often what we hear from the business community, the development community and others that are just interacting with our planning department, is there an opportunity to do things online? And we need to be doing that. Finance is moving online in terms of a number of their payment options. I know community services, in terms of what we've been doing around registration, that continues to migrate more and more online. And so I'll look to Matt, if he's got anything kind of under his cape that he wants to, you know, suggest or announce or share. And similarly, Shannon, I see eager to say something.
Through you, Chair, to the counselor. One of the exciting things that we're doing in community services, as I participate with a larger group of directors across Ontario, is we're looking at AI and a number, a few communities, not a number yet, are looking at online bots and sort of that, can I help you? How can I help you? What are you looking for? What programs are you looking for in our facilities? Are you looking for the cost of swim lessons? Are you looking for the hours of operation? So we are definitely watching what others are doing that are a little ahead of us in that regard. And I do think that with AI, as well as a number of the systems that we are putting online, there'll be a lot more online customer service focus where citizens and residents can serve themselves.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you. Does that help, Counselor Pachivu?
That does help, Madam Chairman. Okay, second question through you. I will try to be more succinct. And I can't find it, but I know it was here because I read it. So probably a question through you to Shannon McKay. Shannon, you had brought forward a concept planned, because I was stopped by a resident on the weekend, that green space at the end of Bush that leads to the Ashby Trail, that's just a green space. And we had a presentation from Counselor Brunet's committee that he was involved with about turning that into a, I think it was, is it the Minnaki Forest with the trees and the benches? Because right now, all it is is a patch of grass. And just wondering when that might commence.
Through the Chair, to the counselor, I think I'm going to pass that to Matt Bruder because Sam and Madison have been working on that together.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. We have been working on that, Counselor, kind of, not behind the scenes, but we've been doing some consultation with the neighbors, with the community, with the Benchland Citizens Group as well. We do have a rough design, but it's still being kind of vetted in terms of what the species need to be, just from a resiliency standpoint, looking at that specific area, you want to minimize maintenance, but at the same time, got to make sure that there's no impacts to adjacent property owners. I don't have a timeline yet for you, because there's still some funding implications that come along with it, but I know that we're trying to target it as soon as we can, because there was a positive reception by the neighbors. So looking to get that online as soon as possible, but don't have a definitive timeline yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And third question, Madam Chairman?
Yep.
To Mr. Krokopoulos, another bouquet about changing the way that we approach grants. In my time on council, that was something that we didn't do in the past, or we didn't do it well. And under your tutelage, and I remember one of the very first meetings that we had is that when you see government funding, you can't just go once and stick your hand out. There needs to be... your hand out. There needs to be that constant dialogue between upper levels of government, and a trust and an advocacy established between both parties. So I notice here that we've been able to secure over twenty million dollars this far in this term of council, and pretty sure you've got that number at your fingertips. But during your tenure, are we over that hundred million dollar mark? Or we're pretty darn close?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would say we're, we're pretty darn close councillor. Not there yet, but I, you know, I would suggest we're, we're quickly approaching it. Most recently, we worked closely with our team at the library on two million there. We are close to announcing some additional funding from the federal government on some shoreline protection. Obviously, this report includes the eighteen million dollars for the Jordan Water Main and the pumping station, not to mention some of the other smaller projects, Green Lane, a number of others that we've been successful in achieving. And so you're right, in terms of good government relations, isn't just going when you have a problem sometimes. And this council's been very good when we're at A M O, about thanking various ministers, about speaking about our needs, about laying the foundation for things that are coming, so that we can then align our asks. Also having shovel-ready projects. Today, you'll have seen the announcement that came out around additional Hughes funding and some other funding opportunities. It is about having shovel-ready projects, or being able to pivot really fast if we don't have shovel-ready projects, so that we can have an application and bring it forward.
Terrific. And thank, thank you very much. And yeah, at a rough, you know, off the top of my head, I figured we were around the ninety-one million dollar mark. So, you know, any update you can provide. And hopefully, we'll be hearing soon about those bridge, the bridge that goes over Concho Creek, and maybe allow us a little flexibility there. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Mickelick, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, to our C A O. I do remember when we produced this, there was a lot of Post-its, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of breakouts, there was a lot of time spent on this. And, you know, I look at it, and I say, man, we're asking for a lot here. We, there's a lot here. And, and I, you know, I get the bouquets, and we all want to have a, you know, great, you know, great midterm report card. But like, because it's a midterm report card, is there any challenges you see, especially given the times that we've faced lately? Do you see, do you see any challenges with trying to realistically achieve these goals? Because when they're lofty, that can be difficult.
Through, through you, Madam Chair, to the councillor. Yeah, councillor, I look at these kind of reports to you as a time for us to be realistic, and, and I think purposeful. Resource pressures absolutely are there. Provincial direction, changing constantly. And that means that we need to assess where our, where are the community needs, and what do we need to do. So what can be achievable in the second term, or in the second half of this term of council, is also something we're examining. Does that mean maybe we don't do as many projects? I know that I'm not always the favorite person when I say that. But it is one of those things that we're looking at. And so it is about being realistic, as I said. And, and, you know, I'd use the word purposeful. So we need to assess it, we need to look at what's achievable. And you think about interest rates, and that means things are slowing down, which means not as much development's happening, which means not, not as much revenue is coming in. Those all have a cascading effect, and those are all things that we look at as, as a municipality when we put plans and budgets and strategies in front of council. So not sounding alarm bells, but just one of those things that we're very cognizant of.
Thank you. And I appreciate that response. It's a realistic response. We can say everything is just great, fantastic, wonderful. But realistically, when, when you aim high or shoot high, like, there's that possibility where, you know, we may have to, or we should always be fluid in our decision-making, especially when it comes to funding all of these needs, wants, and asks. So I appreciate that, that response, and that we are looking at that holistically. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mickelick. Mayor Easton, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I also compared this document to the tenure project plan that came out in 2022, scheduled to go through to 2031. And definitely, you can start to see some of the potential changes that, that I think that councillor Mickelick is, is referring to, because that's, that's very realistic. So maybe this is the year, maybe the 2026 budget is the one where we're going to, to take a look at what's on the agenda and what maybe needs to be changed. In the meantime, though, to get a mid-year report is really laudable. I want to thank the C A O and the staff for this, and I think that they should all take a great deal of, of credit for the effort in producing the results, but also in taking the time to put this together, so that council can compare what should be happening with, with what is really happening. And that's a good place to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, a really good opportunity to just kind of look over what our priorities are in, in, during busy times. So, great report. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So. There being no further discussion for this item, I have a motion moved by councillor Brunet that committee receive and file for information report A D O two, A D O two twenty-five regarding the 2022, 2026 council priorities midterm progress report attached as appendix A. I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you. The vote is now open. And it is closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. As there are no further reports for the general business and finance committee agenda, I will ask the legislative committee coordinator to transition to our next committee agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be moving the gavel to councillor and Chair Mike Mickelick to assume the chair at this time for the community services and infrastructure committee agenda.
We'll now begin the community services and infrastructure committee agenda. Eight point one delegations. We have no delegations. Eight point two reports. We will now consider item eight point two point one, report P W zero five twenty-five, proposed heavy vehicle traffic bylaw, Thirty Road and Mountain View Road. The director of Public Works will provide introductory comments. Director Dave, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of committee. Just a few opening remarks on this report. So this report, before you, this evening, staff are recommending committee approve a heavy vehicle weight restriction bylaw for the escarpment crossings of Thirty Road and Mountain View Road. This report is in response to feedback from nearby residents in the area, and as well the Naga Regional Police due to safety concerns related to large heavy trucks using Thirty Road, which the report speaks to in more detail around those specific concerns. Staff are also proactively recommending a similar rate restriction on Mountain View Road for consistency purposes, and as well to prevent any potential restricted trucks from Thirty Road than using Mountain View Road. Furthermore, I'd like to highlight that this proposed heavy vehicle bylaw will not apply to any properties that reside around Thirty, along Thirty Road or Mountain View Road, that may require large trucks for their own, supporting their businesses and, and their, their homes. This bylaw is meant to restrict heavy trucks using these roads to get to other areas of the region, so kind of from a point A to point B perspective. And with that, I'm here to help answer any questions committee may have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Dave. Looks like an interesting subject. We have a number of councillors with questions. We'll start with councillor Pachivva. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mickelick, and through you to Director Graham. Dave, really happy about this report. Councillor Brunet and I get a lot of telephone calls or emails about this, wondering, will we be working? So if, we need to put up signage warning of this. And if we wait to get to the town boundary, it's the point of no return. So will we be working with the region and Grimsby and West Lincoln to put signage up at the corner of Fly and Thirty Road, to say, to, to have the trucks stay on Fly Road either over to Mountain in Grimsby, or Mountain, or Victoria in Lincoln? Because if there's nothing before they get to Thirty Road, where the town border is, they're not gonna turn around. And the same with, with Mountain View. They're already coming down Kemp, and where the, you know, the, the changeover municipalities, I can't see them turning around. So warnings need to happen much sooner, and, and much like we did at the top of Mountain Street with the, with the big signage and the lights that says, that warns them, you know, because they'll get to that point and go, oh, we didn't know. So then, you know, you've got a, you got a loophole for enforcement, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thanks councillor for the question. So we are, we have been in collaboration with both Towne and Grimsby staff and regional staff. Towne and Grimsby is very supportive of this initiative or this proposal. So they'll be putting for sure signs at Thirty Road and Kemp Road, and, and at the top of Thirty Road and Ridge Road. That's the plan at the moment in speaking with the Towne and Grimsby. So we also are, have an active education and to, and plan to inform, you know, the trucking industry of the change. The police have also been very supportive. We've got a, a plan with, with the police to help educate drivers as well with this initiative. But we are looking at, you know, advanced signage where we can councillor, but the Towne and Grimsby is very supportive of putting signs in, in their municipality, not a problem.
Okay. And terrific. And through you councillor, Chair Mickelick. And, and in the report too, Director Graham, it talked about the N R P S and their support of this. And it all, you know, they can't be there all of the time. But, and I'm not asking for this literally, but is there going to be, because we don't want to be tipping people off about this, but will there be more proactive enforcement when it first occurs, with then with periodic checks? And you've got, you'll have a plan from them for that?
Through Mr. Chair, to the councillor, yes, we do. We have been in lots of discussions with the N R P S about a plan in terms of, I think, you know, at first, they want to help educate and, and inform of this change, of course, and they're gonna be in the area quite actively. And at first, I think it's gonna take some time to just get the word out that this restriction is in place. We are also looking at municipal five one one, looking at a number of different venues to, you know, start communicating the new restriction. But we do have a plan with N R P S to assist with this.
Okay, that's terrific. Because, and, and through you, Chair Mickelick, it's, it's not, and councillor Reimer, this is, this is his bailiwick too. It's not so much the local truckers that are, you know, going to be an issue here. It's the, it's the out-of-town contractors and, and the short cutters. So we need a, we need a very proactive report, approach to reach out to them. So thank you. Thank you, Chair Mickelick.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Reimer. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mickelick. Thank you, David, for the report. Couple of questions. I'm gonna spin the last comment by councillor Pachivva around just a little bit. The, the data that we have on Thirty Road, when it comes to percentages of trucking, I would, I would spin it that it is, it's not through traffic. Like, nobody wants to run the escarpment who's driving a truck. That's just, they don't want to do that. And they want to take the easiest route. So I would, I would contend that if we do have heavy truck traffic on Mountain or Thirty, Mountain View or Thirty, that is inter-community traffic. So somebody's making a delivery in Beamsville, gonna go up into Smithville, go over to Grimsby, out to Case Terbird, Case Terville, sorry, Case Terville. You know, that, that type of thing. It's not somebody going from Toronto to Buffalo. They don't take Thirty Road. By the way, Thirty Road makes, makes lots of sense to me. I, I understand that. I guess my concerns are with Mountain View. So the, I think I know the answer to this, Director Graham, but do we have any, like, details on that one to two percent of traffic, what, what it entails, or where it's going? Through you, Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the councillor. Thanks for the questions. And you're right. I think, you know, these trucks aren't, you know, going, you know, from Toronto, or like, these would be, there's a lot of truck traffic that's trying to get, you know, from below the escarpment, above the escarpment, like you were saying, West Lincoln area, southern Niagara direction, right? So those are the trucks that, you know, we do want to keep on regional roads for escarpment crossings. In terms of the, the, the truck data that we've been collecting, so we have been monitoring it. And like I was saying, we're in, of all the traffic using Thirty Road, for example, it's around two percent are your large heavy trucks that were, that make up that traffic count. So it's mostly, you know, passenger vehicles and, and things like that using Thirty Road. It is a very busy road, but we just want to get those trucks, the large trucks off the road for the safety measures that we have in the report. And, sorry, you were saying, Mountain View Road, you were looking for some more?
Well, just to translate that to Mountain View, because we're closing Mountain View in the assumption that those trucks are gonna go over there, right? So do we know what kind of trucks those are? Like what, the, the, the follow-up question, David, too, would be then, we realize we're, we're directing this to Mountain Road in Beamsville. And do we realize what kind of trucks are gonna come down Ontario Street and our King Street? And they're legal to do that, right? I, I get the regional road, Stony Creek years ago, before amalgamation, shut down there, because if anybody's driven Stony Creek, their, their escarpment passes are terrible, right? They're, 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 you can't even drive a pickup truck up there. But they have Centennial Parkway, right? So they could direct everyone to Centennial Parkway. That's a beautiful access, right? So we are cutting off, literally, our, you know, it's, and it's a long way. No one's gonna go to Victoria if they're coming down. Like, it's a long way to come around, which Victoria's a nice access as well, too. So we are, we are asking, you know, the trucking community to use Mountain Street now, or Mountain and Grimsby, which is not really great either. So do we have any concerns or any, you know, any follow-up? Sorry, David, and then I'll throw, I'm just trying to give you the, the lead on the next question was gonna be to that. What do we, for Mountain, Mountain Road, what are we looking at? How are we gonna sort of approach that? Through you, Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the councillor, and, and thanks for clarifying that. So basically, we want trucks to, large heavy trucks, to, to stay on regional roads. So your options would be Mountain Road in Grimsby, to get up the escarpment and head, you know, towards West Lincoln direction, or, or southern West Niagara, if you will. Mountain Street in Beamsville is the next one, regional road, and then there's Victoria Avenue, Vineland, right? So those are your three main regional escarpment crossings that we would prefer trucks to use versus local roads in our community that aren't really, you know, there's a lot of issues with that in terms of just safety. You know, Mountain View Road, for example, hasn't been built to really accommodate, you know, an increase in truck traffic. It's a local road, really meant to service, you know, trucks in that general area. In terms of Mountain View Road, like I was saying, we just didn't want to displace the Thirty Road trucks that are gonna be restricted to take the next one at Mountain View until, you know, the industry gets used to the restrictions, and then they'll have a better handle on, you know, the regional accesses to use instead. Mountain View Road, too, is also one of our main active transportation routes, Green Belt Cycling Road, et cetera. So it's really not a road that we want to see an increase on trucks.
Yeah, thanks, David. I just, I'm, I'm just concerned about the, you know, the, what we're asking trucks to do now might be worse than what we have trucks doing right now. I realize bikes, there's gonna be no trucks on Thirty Road. The bikes can use Thirty Road. Just throwing that out there. I realize I don't, I'm not on the A T Committee or realizing that. But if we want to keep them separate, we can, we can do other things. I'm, I'm concerned. Thirty Road, I understand. Mountain View, I'm, I'm, I got some concerns of what it's gonna do to our other roads in the, in the, in the community. So, thanks, David. Thank you, Chair. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. It was something that both Director David Graham and myself did talk about earlier, so it is, it is a valid question that you brought forward. Next we have councillor Russell.
Thank you Chair McLoughlin. Through you to Director Graham. This is kind of a combination question between this and item 8.2.3. So we have 30 Road construction coming up, reconstruction coming up in a few years. Has this new proposed bylaw been factored into what the work is going to be required in that reconstruction? Like, are we going to be lowering our requirements and maybe some of our costs on that future project by having these limits in there?
Through you Mr. Chair to the councillor, good question. And yes, I would say that, you know, once we have a bylaw in place and we're actually restricting, again, the large, heavy trucks as part of our future upgrade works for 30 Road, we can take that into account. We don't plan on putting trucks back on 30 Road if this bylaw is approved. So, yeah, you could definitely look at, you know, reduced costs if we're not trying to accommodate trucks. And, and we've looked at that and that, that is difficult to begin with, even if we do try and upgrade 30 Road, just with the current, you know, geometrics, the steep grades, the hills, the curves would require significant impact to the escarpment area, if you will. So we wouldn't be looking at that in the future.
Okay. No, thank you. And again, I appreciate that. Again, I think the bylaw itself is, is quite, quite overdue. And again, I'm happy to support it. And again, I also look forward to any potential of those savings that we have on that 30 Road reconstruction project over the next coming years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have councillor Timmers. Go ahead councillor.
Thank you very much. Through you Chair to Director Graham. So I recall when we, we did the, the restrictions on Cherry Avenue and Quarry and we put the large sign at the top of Mountain Street, you know, so now it seems like the trucks are just being pushed over to 30 and Mountain View. I totally understand 30 Road. It's, I can't imagine anyone driving down that in a, in a really large truck. When, when we did that initially a few years ago, I know some of the local farmers and you're going to have like the wineries on Mountain View Road concerned about local access. Like, there will be some vehicles that do, are, need to go there. So will you be doing signage as you did above the mountain on the other side?
Through you Mr. Chair to, to the councillor, thanks for the question. So just to clarify too, there's a lot of exemptions with this bylaw. I know we're talking about restricting heavy trucks and, and that's our focus, but there's a number of exemptions because we do respect, you know, local, there's local needs to go up and down these roads. So, you know, just to reiterate, all emergency vehicles, municipal vehicles, school buses, utility vehicles are all exempt from this bylaw. But any properties, businesses, residents, et cetera, living on 30 Road, Mountain View Road, all the wineries on Mountain View Road, we totally respect, there's a lot of businesses up there, they can all have heavy trucks service their property to support their business. That's all exempt in this bylaw.
Okay. Thank you for that. And through you Chair, so I, I just know that was a big issue originally when it happened over in my ward. And then it was corrected, you know, quickly with some signage. My other question through to Director Graham, so you said that you've been working with Grimsby and that they're supportive of this bylaw. Are they planning, I don't know if you mentioned this or I missed it, are they planning to do signs on Kemp Ridge and Park, not allowing those trucks as well? Did I hear you correctly?
Through you Mr. Chair to the councillor, correct. Yes, the, kind of the process is, once council makes a decision on this bylaw, then we're going to forward the motion to Grimsby and then Grimsby's going to look at, because Grimsby has to create a bylaw for their roads, because they own the top portion of the, of those roads. But yes, once the Town of Grimsby creates a bylaw for their jurisdiction, then they'll be putting signs at those locations.
Okay. So it, it, through you Chair, just a comment. So the trucks then have Victoria Avenue, Mountain Street, Beamsville and Mountain Street, Grimsby. That's it. So, okay. Thank you.
Regional roads. We're trying to direct them more towards the regional roads.
Yeah, thank you.
Next we have councillor Brunet. Go ahead.
Thank you Chair McLoughlin. Through you to Mr. Graham. So Dave, thanks for, I know this has been a long, arduous process. You, you and staff, I know Walter, have been working with a number of residents over on 30 Road for probably close to, close to three full years. And I know this has not been an easy process. And I think one of the delays, and I think you're being, I think you're being very modest in articulating how difficult this has been to get it to this, this point. Because I think we all agree that without enforcement and without the support of MTO and NAGA Regional Police, this bylaw means nothing. So I'm wondering through you Chair, if, if Mr. Graham, if you could actually speak to a little more detail about what has taken us to this point to get the NRP and the MTO to actually buy into and some, maybe some of the incidents that were occurring over on 30 Road? Because I think a lot of people think on an access road coming downhill, that it's a, it's a runaway truck and that's the concern. But in actual fact, we have found out over the last three years that 30 Road, the problem is not really going downhill, it's going uphill. So I'd appreciate if you could speak to that, not only to the council, but to the residents at home listening.
Through you Mr. Chair to the councillor, and yeah, thanks for those comments. No, you're absolutely right. Like this, one of the important things when you create a bylaw like this is to make sure that we're in discussions with those who are going to have to enforce the bylaw. So we have had a lot of discussions with the NRPS primarily, also had some feedback from our MTO enforcement group on how best to put this bylaw in place wording wise so that it can be enforced. This was actually a recommendation from the NRPS based on a few incidents that we experienced just recently. And also, we've heard from residents and, you know, we respect what they have to say. They live along those roads and they're observing a lot of concerning situations. And basically, the biggest problem is, is that, and as councillor Brunet was saying, it's trucks going up the hill. So there's some very steep grades, both vertical and horizontally, and if the truck stalls in those areas, it just doesn't have enough momentum to get going again. So then it, then it's stuck in that location and it's either forced to wait to get some help with a tow truck, or worsely, it'll try backing down the road a bit in order to get more momentum to get started again. Again, these are the heavy, large, heavy trucks that have this issue. So we've had a few incidents over the last number of months and, and that's really what's brought this to light, that we need to do something in terms of restricting these large trucks on 30 Road. And like I said, we've been working closely with the enforcement groups in terms of how do we best do this? Because we all realize that enforcement is really what it's going to come down to, to make sure that these large trucks are staying off the road. So that's a, that's a little bit of a update and all, happy to provide anything further if you'd like.
Through you Chair, appreciate Mr. Graham's comments. I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that, you know, that a large focus of this has been on 30 Road. And, and now, just in the last, you know, few weeks and few months, it's now migrated to a, a concern that, you know, that maybe this should happen over on Mountain View Road as well. I'm hearing councillor Timmers, I'm hearing councillor Reimer, and I certainly appreciate, because living, as a resident, living on, on Mountain View Road, we talk on a regular basis with the, with the farmers and the, the grape growers. And certainly over the last two or three weeks, I had actually forgot my, my front doorbell was actually working, but I've certainly realized that it is working. And I must say that those, those, those property owners, those business owners, those wineries and farmers are very supportive of this bylaw. However, they are pointing out, as what's been discussed here this evening, that there are many reciprocal farming operations that are occurring, like Vineland growers is an example. Their tractor trailer pulls into Mountain View Orchards almost on a daily basis. That's a full-size tractor trailer coming from Jordan, bringing materials to a grower. That grower has, has added, he's probably, I don't know, six times his size on what he was years ago. He has added packing facilities, he has adding sorted operations and storage. So many, many farmers, all through Lincoln, are now utilizing the facility there to provide their, their packing, their sorting and storage, which means materials are being trucked from certain farm operations up the road. So one of the, one of the comments that I had, I had heard from a bunch of residents is they are supportive of this, but they are very, very hopeful that the Town of Lincoln, in working with the NRP and the MTO, will be sharing this information with the, the people doing the enforcement. In other words, there will be a long list of operators and truckers providing services to these facilities. These farmers are out in the field, they're packing, they're sorting, they're spraying, they're tilling. They don't have time to be talking to the police coming to their operation on a daily basis. So if this is going to work, one of the reasons, and one of the reasons why it will be successful is that we work in conjunction with NRP and MTO. So the residents are asking, through you Chair to Mr. Graham and to staff, that we, we make sure we get this right from the beginning. Councillor Timmers talks about issues that have happened in the past. We need to learn from, from the past and make sure that we get this, we get this right. I think for the most part, people are very supportive. However, without the proper enforcement, this will be difficult. So I just want to pass that, those comments around from a lot of the farmeries and wineries up and down, on Mountain View Road, from, from Lake Ontario all the way to the bench. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Enforcement's always going to be a challenge, no matter what we, what bylaw we put out there. But, and people will break the rules. There's always people that are, you know, they cheat. But if they do break a driveshaft or they do blow a clutch on their way up that hill, they will, they will find out that they, there's going to be a bill to pay and there's going to be enforcement at that time. That's for certain. Next we have Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I really feel that we're on the right track with this, meaning that the progression of the discussion is taking us exactly where we need to be. So we've had very good luck with the cameras, with our project in regard to truck movement, regarding the weigh scales. We have plans in the works. We've completed Durham, we have Bartlett next, we need to move that up. Because the signage has to reflect that there is, there are alternate routes for those that can take it. So I think that we should be, I, I agree with what has, I agree with all the comments that have been made because they have their, they all have their features that are very important. I mean, the big feed trucks have got to move around in certain areas. If you're moving crops out of the fields, some of those trucks are pretty hefty. Harvesters are bigger than they've ever been, they take up the full width of the road now. And just other general farm equipment, so there's going to be issues that have to be addressed. And it's going to have to be flexible. But one thing for sure, when you can pick out who they, who's creating the problems, you can have a much more personal engagement with them. And that's where the MTO and NRPS come in, and they're very effective in that regard. So this is not going to be easy, but this is, our accomplishments that are in this document are the beginning, not the end. So I, I really think that we need to continue doing more work on this. Madam Chair, through you to the CAO, because we're doing what we need to do in this community, but we've got to make sure that everybody's getting fair treatment across the board. So that's our burden and, and, and we need to, we need to work toward a, a good end. If we had to right now, I would say yes to 30 Road and leave Mountain View as it is and start doing a different kind of monitoring. If we're, if we feel that, if we approve both of them, that we're not going to start slipping away and not monitoring what's happening on Mountain View Road, or we start having problems in that area, you know, maybe, I guess we're going to have to decide what the ramifications are of approving one and the other, or one and not the other. But it sounds like there's a fair number of issues that are going to have to be monitored. Thank you, this Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Do you have a concern? Do you, would, are you comfortable with having both roads at this time?
Well, I guess my question, my question, I, I do have concerns because I don't know what kind of resources we have. Maybe that's the question that I'll ask, so that I'm not abusing my time to speak. But, so I'll turn to the CAO and ask him through the Chair how he thinks that this can, we can take another swipe at this, given what we know now, that we probably didn't know maybe even a year ago. What can we delay and, and what, and what do we, what's urgent that we need to go forward on? That'll be my question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Through you Mr. Chair, to, to Mayor Easton. Maybe I'll start with a part of your question that I think focuses on how we're going to tackle this. And I would say, education, enforcement and awareness. I think we've heard a lot of different tools by which we can do that, in terms of reaching out to operators, but just generally how we can, how we're going to communicate and, and get this information out. Enforcement, I think as a number of councillors have said, will be at the crux of this, without that enforcement, without working with our partners at NRPS, we won't achieve success here. So I would say, once we determine how this is working, then I think we can look at other potential options. I know we've talked about Mountain View and others throughout the years, but I would suggest it's not about resourcing right now, it's about making sure we cater whatever we do to this particular crossing, to this particular north-south access point, and then seeing if we can change people's behavior. I think we've heard, you know, going to Victoria is too far, but we need to look at what are those other options. And I would, you know, we haven't talked about advocating for the crossing, that's still, I would say, a generation away, but we can't lose sight of that as well.
No, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Easton, you satisfied?
Yeah, thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Definitely, the board lit up, every, just about everyone had something to say. And not doing anything will certainly achieve that result. So I think trying, what we're trying, hoping to see if there's a positive outcome, we'll hear feedback, I'm sure, from all members of the public and, as well as the truckers as well, and we'll, NRPS and MTO. So we'll, we can always make changes down the road, should, should this not be the best decision at this time. But again, doing nothing will, will achieve nothing, so. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Patreeva, that committee receive and file for information report PW 0525 regarding a proposed heavy vehicle traffic bylaw for 30 Road and Mountain Road. That committee recommends council approve the proposed heavy vehicle traffic bylaw attached as appendix B. I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you Chair, that vote is now open. And the vote is closed and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now consider item 8.2.2, report PW 0425, proposed levying bylaw for Gavora Municipal Drain Maintenance. The director of public works will provide introductory comments. Director Graham, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of committee. The purpose of this report is to authorize the treasurer to recover the costs incurred during the maintenance of the Gavora Municipal Drain in accordance with the Drainage Act. The Gavora- The Gavora municipal drain maintenance has now been completed, and I'm pleased to advise that the town was successful in receiving a grant from OMAFRA, which further helped reduce the maintenance costs for the landowners. And now that the grant has been received, and final billing is known, the town can create a bylaw to collect costs from the benefiting property owners. And again, the Drainage Act provides council with authority to pass a levying bylaw detailing the cost to be levied to benefiting landowners in question. And if committee has any questions, both the Director of Finance and myself are here to help answer those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Dave. We have Counselor Murray. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to our staff, this is the first time that I've seen something like this come before council in my term here, unless I missed it before, in which case I apologize. Can you just clarify for me how homeowners are made aware of this obligation? I don't mean now, when they get their bill for the levy, but more so when it was initially put in and/or when they purchased their property. So for instance, if I were to buy a home now that is impacted by this, by the map that we saw, is it included in my purchase agreement? Is there some sort of notification that I'm aware that when this has to happen, I will be levied for the costs of that?
Director Dave.
Through you, Mr. Chair, maybe I'll just take a stab at it, and I know Director of Finance might make a few comments. I know if there's a property information request, it is a question that does get asked, if the town has asked that question, but I don't know, Charlotte, do you have anything to add?
Charlotte, thank you for your attendance.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to the counselor. I think the Director of Public Works answered very appropriately. I don't know that there's a requirement for property owners to disclose that, but I'm not a real estate expert, but if we have that information, we'll provide it. And I know in terms of the Public Works Department, they did really try to be very communicative with the property owners about the work that was being undertaken, so they might not know what their exact portion would be, but they would have known that it was happening and that they would be receiving a bill.
And as a follow-up to that, if I could, Chair?
Go ahead.
So, how often do we anticipate that work like this needs to happen, and that a levy like this will be applied to those homeowners? Is this something that happens once every five years, once every two years? What does that look like?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. So, this really doesn't happen that often. The town of Lincoln doesn't have a lot of municipal drains designated by bylaw. This is our largest municipal drain that we have, and it doesn't, basically doesn't need cleaning that often, so probably 10 years, depending.
Excellent. And one final question, if I may. So, what would happen, if this, before the Gavora drain was put in place, were these properties regularly flooding? What would be the impact of the maintenance not having happened? Again, over there, not to you. Thanks, Charlotte.
Through you, Ms. Chair, to the counselor, great question. So before this was created as a municipal drain, it would have just been drainage across all private properties. So municipal drains are desirable if there's a lot of properties that drainage has to cross, primarily for agricultural purposes. So, you know, you would depend on everybody along the way to maintain their drain or improve their drain, or in some cases, the drain is actually created to convey good drainage for the area. This has been in place, I think, since 1960. I think that's when it was designated as a drain and created. So usually, municipal drains are brought forward by landowners by petition through the Drainage Act, and it's usually to improve drainage in a certain area by majority of landowners in support of it.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. No, interesting question about being on title with the additional tax, and that, you know, whether or not that's disclosed to prospective or potential buyers, because perhaps title insurance might cover that if people are unaware when buying a property, so. Counselor Timmers, I see you're next.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, the Gavora ditch certainly has quite a history, and it hadn't been cleaned for 40 years, so it was time. I know at the, one of the first meetings, and, you know, a lot of people came and trying to understand what the Gavora ditch is. So very happy to see that the work is done, and congratulations to staff on their successful grant that they received to, you know, really kind of take a portion of the cost from the residents. So through to Charlotte, I read in the report about payment plans. So I guess the bills haven't gone out yet, so, but can you just tell us a little bit what you're going to do with the payment plans?
Through you, Chair, to the counselor. We're proposing basically that we would send the bills in June, and for most property owners, they would be due in December. So that gives them six months interest-free, because we know this is their first time receiving a bill on this drain for a long time. It gives them some notice. If they are $775 and under, then they would pay by this December, and then if they're higher than $775, we would give them the option to join a two-year plan. So they would pay, make one payment this December, and one payment the following December. We would charge interest in the second year at 6%, which is lower than our typical interest rate on our receivables. And then for those that are not under that payment plan, if they don't pay by December, it would be added to the property tax rule, and then it would accumulate interest at our regular rate of interest.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Chair, just another question. So will that be included in the tax, in their bills that go out, that option?
Through you, Chair, to the counselor, yes. I know the Director of Public Works and I had some discussion about how to best approach this, but we thought the best thing would be to come to you first, ensure that you were approving the payment plan, and then we'll take the steps to communicate to them what their options are.
Okay. No, I think the payment plan is fair, and I think it's a good idea, because there could be some new owners there that it's just kind of come upon them, right, without knowing that this was going to happen. So, great project, I'm glad it's done. Kind of a funny fact, though, that, I know I'm going off, no question here, Chair, just a comment, that the Gavora ditch actually stops a Camden Road, and on the other side of the road, it becomes a Stony Creek. I think that's really kind of neat, because for 30 years, I thought I had the Gavora ditch, but I don't. So maybe a good thing, too. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Pachariva.
Thank you, Chair McLaughlin, through you. I guess a question and a follow-up to Counselor Timmers' question on how the residents will be notified about this. So, Charlotte, are we going to use a registered mail? Because Counselor Brunet and I had got some questions from residents that knew nothing about it. So like some of our, you know, mailouts, they don't open it, they throw it away. And this came as a big surprise to them at the initial phase. So hoping we might be able to use registered letters to get it into their hands, so they know what's coming, so it doesn't come as a surprise?
We'll ask David Graham to take a stab at that one first.
Thank you, through you, Chair, and back to the counselor. I just wanted to highlight, too, that through some of this, through the communication process, we have been using registered mail on this project to the landowners, because it was very important, and we heard you loud and clear from, you know, earlier on in the process, when we first started to communicate this, that we want to make sure everyone knows. So we have been using registered mail to date, so people understand that, you know, they're part of a drain, we've cleaned the drain, and, you know, we're in the process of getting funding, and we'll be sending out billing information. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Charlotte, you care to add some additional info?
The only thing I'll add to that is we have done some communication. I know on our website, we've been trying to put some communication out about the potential postal disruption that could occur at the end of this month, so we'll just work together to try to come up with a solution to make sure that we get the information to the residents, and try to use the best method that we can.
Counselor.
Terrific. Good to hear. And second question through you, Chair McLaughlin, and it's just, it's a question of clarification. So being a geography major, Appendix A makes the hair on the back of my neck stand up. So, if we go from west to east, it should be Zimmerman, Mountain, Frost, Cosby, Speace, Camden, Cherry. We've got Camden Road in two spots, and just to make sure that everything's copacetic with the bylaw, that that's corrected, right? Because I would hate someone to say, well, that doesn't show me, so.
I thought, Counselor, I thought you were an economist. I thought you made.
I do it all, and you made a little bit of geology, too, there. Rocks for jocks.
Director Dave. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and definitely, Counselor, thanks for pointing that out, we'll get that corrected as soon as possible.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I think it's important, you know, some people, it's $13 or $14, you know, and it's not that, but some of them are in the thousands, and I try to really make sure those people are aware. I'd hate to pay interest on $4,000 or $5,000, so. Good comment, Counselor. Next, we have Mayor Easton. Go ahead, Mayor. Oh, I just, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not declaring an interest, although we're impacted by this. It's the same process for all of us that are on this, on the map, and so it's really more for information. I'm on the list, and we'll be using the same process as everyone else to look after whatever bill we get. Thanks very much.
Appreciate your clarification. Yeah, I'm not sure if we're able to haggle on this, if we do own properties within the area, so it's a set amount, that's the way it goes. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Reimer. That committee receive and file for information report PW-0425 regarding proposed levying bylaw for Gavora municipal drain maintenance, and that committee recommend council approve a bylaw to levy maintenance costs for the drain attached as Appendix C. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you. The vote is now open. And the vote is now closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now consider item 8.2.3, Report PW-0725, Infrastructure Update Quarter One, 2025. The Director of Public Works will provide introductory comments. Director Graham, busy night. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. This infrastructure update report reports on projects and operational programs for the timeline of Q1 2025, and you'll notice that we, this report has a total different look and feel than our previous version, and I just wanted to highlight some of those improvements that we've made with this particular report. We've tried to give it a little more of a personal touch by profiling some of our staff from our teams who are out in the field supporting the important work that we're doing, and delivering service to our residents. We've also included a location map in the back of the document to kind of better reference each project in the document, so you kind of have a geographical overview of where the various projects are occurring. We've also expanded the document to include public and open spaces operational programs, and as well, we've also tried to incorporate some of the corporate projects underway as well in the document. We've also tried to expand the quarterly statistic summaries for each division in the document, with the view to better report on the trends and targets that we're working with, try and give some more context around those. So I'm really pleased on how this report has turned out, and I'd like to thank our communications team for all their support on this. I know it was a real team effort between our communications and public works staff. And with that, both Walter and myself are here tonight to help answer any questions on any of the projects, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Director Dave. I know that both Counselor, Vice Chair, Brunet, myself, we were speaking to you last quarter or so, and we were saying, you know, let's shake up this report, let's have some creativity to it, let's feature some of, you know, the good people that work for our town in these reports, and I think it looks, I think it looks fantastic. I think it's broken down into sections, a little less detail to it, like, you know, more high-level, less complicated. So do members of council have any questions, any of the projects or the report itself? Our CAO has.
Through you, Mr. Chair, not a question, but just want to highlight Dan Masara, Dave Warden, that are here in the crowd, and of course Walter Newbauer, taking on a lot of our corporate projects. So I know you mentioned that there's a lot of staff, and we're trying to highlight them. I thought I'd take this opportunity to highlight them, because they're here, they've waited a few hours for this report, and once again, good news when we don't get the questions.
Well, we were close, but Counselor Timmers, I see your name on that board. Go ahead.
It's all good. I don't have a question. But I didn't want this fantastic report to just go by with nothing being said, because it's fantastic. I love it, and it's such a good resource for us. When people ask us questions, we have it here, we can look it up. And I just want to thank staff. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. No, appreciate that. It's going to come in handy when Counselor Murray and myself have a ward open house in Ward Three, and it's also, especially with things going on like down in the valley, like, you know, knowing what answers to give people when they're wanting to know when things are going to be finished up or how things are progressing, it's good to have this report. Mayor Easton, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is a really outstanding report. It's improving all the time, and I particularly appreciate the information from the region in it. I think that keeps everything in perspective. And I'm wondering now, Mr. Chairman, if it's possible, if the treasurer can tell us whether it's possible for us to go back and look at the information that we have presented at budget time, that breaks down what the costs are going to be and where the funding is coming from, because it usually takes us quite a few months after our projects are done. So could we have the 2025 report? Is it too soon for that, so that we can actually go back and provide that information for the public? I think a lot of people would be quite interested in it.
Excellent question. I kind of like that question, just from the fact that we do try to save money on these projects, and if they do come under budget, I think it'd be valuable information. What are your thoughts, Charlotte?
Through you, Chair, to the mayor. So we've had some conversation about this. It's something we would really like to be able to do. One of the challenges that we have is the lag in time from when we have information in finance compared to the real-time data that they have in public work. So they know immediately when a project is done. It's fairly easy to, not easy to report on that, they put a ton of work into it, but it's timely to report on that. In our case, if we look at, for example, a typical month, say there's work say there's work done in the month of March, there's usually up to a six-week lag for us to actually get the invoices in the door, even so that we know the costs that were completed to that month. And then it still takes us time to compile that information and then adjust all of our reports. So that's the reason that there's a lag in time between when you get this information and when you get the information from finance. And if we did them together, it might result in a delay in this information, which we think you would rather have it in a timely manner.
Mayor Easton?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we should understand that, that, you know, that there's that difference. That's the reality of how the information flows, and not worry about it coming later. Because I think it would be really excellent to have a report, and I'm not fixing this, Mr. Chairman, but to have a report at the end of March, for example, for projects that were completed in 2025. Maybe that's too soon. I don't care about the timing. I just think, as you said, Mr. Chairman, this is very, these projects are very important to our community. We provide this report, and that is information that would be very beneficial for everybody. Certainly, having knowledge of the increased cost of things is extremely important. And I'm not going to make a motion. I think that the conversation, the CEO is having the conversation with his staff, obviously. And, you know, maybe we could take the next step to see what we can do, even this year. If we could have a report on 2025, whenever it's possible, it will be relevant, in my opinion, whatever time we get it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think anything's possible. I think that as long as we're willing to wait just that quarter till all the bills come in, and I think anything's possible. And I'm sure Charlotte and Dave will go back and discuss this amongst themselves and see what they can do down the road. Thank you very much.
So there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Russell that committee receive and file information report PW 0725 regarding infrastructure update Q1 2025 attached as Appendix A. I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open up the vote.
Thank you. The vote is now open. And the vote is closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. As there are no further reports for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda, I will ask the legislative committee coordinator to transition to our next committee agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be moving the gavel to Counselor and Chair Anna Murray to assume the chair this time for the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda.
Yeah. Is it possible to take a five-minute break?
Uh-huh.
Sure, we can recess for five minutes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be moving the gavel to Counselor and Chair Anna Murray to assume the chair this time for the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. Yeah. Is it possible to take a five-minute break?
Uh-huh.
Sure, we can recess for five minutes. Please, five minutes.
We will now begin the Planning and Economic Development Agenda. Item number 9.1 is Delegations. We have none. 9.2 is Reports. We will now reconsider Report PD-10-25, Impacts of Funding Complications on Affordable Housing Timelines and Feasibility. Our senior planner will provide introductory comments. Mr. Workington, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So, over the past year, the Housing Select Committee has undertaken research on the opportunities and challenges of constructing new affordable housing here in Ontario and Niagara. And through these two, and through these activities, you know, two key themes related to funding challenges emerged. So, one of them is, you know, one, there's a lot of questions on why it's so difficult to build affordable housing when Canada used to build a lot of it. And the second one is affordable housing providers having a hard time, harder time, getting funding and making things work from a financial perspective through, because of a lot of different factors. One of the most important of which is that capital funding programs haven't really kept up with the rising costs of new developments. So, to answer that first theme, that first question, you know, why is it so difficult now to build affordable housing? Well, there's a few, there's quite a few different responses to that. But one of the most important is that throughout the mid-'60s up until the mid-1990s, the federal government and the Ontario government basically provided a lot of, or funded 100% of the capital costs to new affordable housing developments. In addition, many of these developments also received operating grants from both these governments to reduce monthly rents that were far below market levels. Now, that's a very high-level overview. There were several programs during this period. But the important thing to note here is that capital funding was at a significantly higher level than it is now. Now, this all changed in the mid-1990s, when virtually all capital and operating grants from senior governments ended for about a decade or so. When senior governments did get back into funding affordable housing developments, it was at a much less, lower level than it was in the past. So, whereas you typically receive 100% of your capital funding from the senior levels of government, now you're getting a hard cap at either 75% or $150,000 units, $150,000 per unit. So, and that's kind of really exacerbated over the last 10 years. So, what we're seeing now is that not only is capital funding decreasing in value, but the actual contribution levels to these projects are also declining relative to previous projects and even, you know, in a couple of years or a few years earlier. This is a result of a few different factors, and I'm grossly oversimplifying here, but you've got three of them. You've got shifting priorities and funding programs. You're really looking at, you know, providing Housing First programs for those who are in need of emergency housing or coming off the street. You've got a shift to provide low-cost, long-term financing rather than capital grants. And third, there's been a significant increase in development costs. So, some figures I've seen say that construction costs have increased by 100% since COVID, but funding from these senior levels of government hasn't kept pace. What does this mean? So, it means that it's a lot, taking a lot longer than it has in previous decades, even 10, 15 years ago, for affordable housing proponents to get off the ground from the time that they get development approvals. Now, I know that this seems a little bleak, but it's not to say that building affordable housing is impossible. On the contrary, what we've seen is that affordable housing is still getting built. It just takes longer, and it takes more partnership from local municipalities as well as partnerships in the community. So, really, what we're seeing in the intent of this report was not, is to only, you know, is to provide some background on some of the funding challenges that affordable housing proponents are seeing. But it's also meant to highlight that, you know, municipalities play an important role in getting these projects off the ground. Municipalities, this means not only from a financial perspective, you know, that could be from, you know, development charge grants, waiver of fees, expedited approvals, the provision of land, but it's also from an advocacy perspective and support perspective. So, when they're coming through development approvals, you know, there's a support when sometimes a community may have some negative feelings about such a project. But it's also advocating to senior levels of government for funding as well. Sometimes there are funding announcements made, as we heard that funding can change quite rapidly, and so we need to be aware of these changes and be able to take advantage of them as they come up. And it also means that, you know, we need to be aware that even if they get development approvals, these projects can take quite a few years to get from, you know, getting site plan approval to getting construction going, because you've got to get all these different things lined up that may not be visible to the public. And so, it's really important to remember all these things when affordable housing developments do come around and when we're talking about housing policy and how to be supportive to them. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josh. Do members of committee have questions? Counselor Timmers, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to Josh. So, there's a lot here in this report, and I'm really happy to see it here tonight. You kind of touched on it a little bit, you know, the funding, the funding is not what it used to be, and compared to past, I'm just, you kind of touched on it. I don't know if staff can even answer this at this point, but, you know, there's a new bill announcement today, and I know there's a report coming with more details. And I'm, I'm hoping, you know, the government's pushing for housing. We're talking about affordable housing. We need affordable housing. Is there going to be some kind of change in the funding? Are we going to see some monies coming from municipalities to assist with this type of housing? I don't know who wants to take that.
Josh, would you like to take a stab at that?
Sure. So, I haven't had time to look at that bill, the new bill today, but what I can say is that housing program funding is always changing. Within the past year, it's changed, I think, twice. Within the past four years, it's changed, I think, dozens of times. And through that, there've been new opportunities for funding as they come along. So, I think, you know, we have collaborating closely with our regional colleagues to be on top of these funding changes as they occur. And if we have a project or a development that's ongoing, we will stay in close partnership with them and alert council to when there are opportunities.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. So, thank you, Josh. The other question I have is around the nonprofit providers that you've, you've met with and had discussions with. And looking at the town of Lincoln, the type of affordable housing that would be suitable here simply because of lack of services? And we know deeply affordable housing needs wraparound services. If you could just comment, was there interest or direction more to what type of housing they would be supportive in Lincoln? Like low, low income or low-cost rentals, for example?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Timmers. So, the CMHC program really focuses on a broad spectrum of housing for low and moderate income households. So, there's, it really depends on local needs as to how much funding one can obtain, as well as those ongoing and evolving funding sources as well. So, unfortunately, it's difficult to say with concrete or with absoluteness on what kind of funding we can obtain for a project. But we will be having, we are finalizing a housing needs and demand study. So, a lot of that will help inform what, what type of housing is required in the community.
No, that's great. Through you, Chair. I think that's my third question. I was going to bring up the housing needs study. So, what do you think that we'll see a change from when we, we had one? I don't recall what year that was that we had a housing study, a need study here. When do you expect that to be complete?
Through you, Chair. So, I'm anticipating that the draft report will be ready at the end of the month, and the, the goal is to have the Housing Select Committee review it, fire to it, coming to council for presentation.
No, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. I'll let other people.
Thank you very much, Counselor Timmers. Counselor McLook, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to either Josh or Matt. With, with respect to this, with all these grants, with all these opportunities, CMHC and, you know, the possibility of waiving DC charges for affordable housing, how many developers are kicking the can? How many, you know, we always have people inquiring, you know, those, those conversations prior to submitting any formal plan, but how many people are kicking the can around here as far as considering or even thinking about the possibility of building an apartment building or affordable housing for that matter?
Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll start, and if Mr. Workington wants to add anything in. I mean, I think some of the sources you're talking about, grants and funding, a lot of it now has shifted a little bit where it's not really, it's not capital funding as it used to be to contribute towards construction costs like it was. Now, it's, you know, shifting into lower interest rates, longer amortizations, things like that as well. So, it's a little bit complicated because, again, when you think about the delta regard, that's coming out of the higher cost of construction. And then, you know, how the grant funding or the, the funding for these types of developments has evolved, there is a big gap. You're not really seeing a whole lot of kicking the tires from developers right now, because even just working on a normal pro forma, let alone an affordable housing pro forma, there's difficulty in getting projects off the ground. But, you know, I know there still is a lot of work that's happening from Niagara Regional Housing, nonprofit providers, looking at more purpose-built opportunities. Now, it's just a matter, see, there's, there's complicating factors because, you know, traditionally, when you only needed, you know, maybe three sources of funding or maybe three advocacy routes, now you have sometimes six, seven, or eight. It's just more complicated, and things are taking a little bit longer as a result. But again, you have to parse it out between, you know, the, the for-profit developers, which are just trying to maintain their performance. Now, they'll work with organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, and they'll work through the CMHC's MLI Select Program to maybe have a portion of their development, a percentage, as we've seen with some developments proposed here before, that could be affordable. But overall, not too many coming forward with a purpose build unless we're talking more about nonprofits working with NRH.
I'm struggling because, you know, we just went through a provincial election. We just went through a federal election, and everyone knows housing is an issue. Housing is a challenge, and everyone's coming up with a solution. Everyone's promising all sorts of solutions, but any solution that I've ever heard hasn't, I don't, unless I'm missing something, really resulted to much housing being built for whatever reason. So, I'm just wondering if the higher levels of government are actually listening to the people that are actually building these buildings and managing them, because I, it's, it can't be the municipalities that are, you know, on, you know, responsible for building these sorts of, we're not necessarily, you know, in that sort of business. That's a regional, provincial, or federal issue, and I'm just, it just seems to me like they're, they're not really, they're not really reacting the way they should. Am I crazy for feeling that way?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, I think you bring up some good points, Counselor. I think that's why we're seeing some of these legislation changes. There are things that municipalities can do. Again, first and foremost is land. That's a huge factor then in of itself. There's other things we can look at considering. For example, I know there was a report brought forward by Niagara Regional Housing Staff that recommended lower-tier municipalities look at their public use provisions in their zoning, which provides a lot of flexibility in zoning provisions and maybe add, not for-profit housing, but if a nonprofit is partnered with Niagara Regional Housing, maybe we look at adding that to the public use provision, which, again, frees up a little more flexibility from a zoning perspective. We can look at waiving some of our other fees. Other municipalities have done that. So, there are things we can do, but you're right. It takes all levels of government, and unfortunately, leading up until now, there hasn't been enough movement in the types of programs, incentives, supporting endeavors that, that have been in place. So, you are right. We are seeing some legislation that is coming out, looking at things like development charges, trying to figure out more standardized ways of doing things, maybe lowering costs in certain instances. And staff, my staff will be coming forward with a report. We'll provide some clarifying information on that. But, yeah, it really does take all levels of government, for sure.
I think we're doing a tremendous amount of work. I think we're doing, making every effort we can, but at the end of the day, we can't have Director Dave Graham have a backhoe operator dig a hole and start pouring foundations for housing. Like, that's, that's up to the private sector, or that's up to a different, different level that is above us. So, that's, and I'm just wondering if we should be commenting to that when we do go to AMO to discuss, you know, what we're hearing and what we're seeing as far as trying to develop actual programs that actually build the needed housing. So, those, those are the comments I have to, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor McLook. Counselor Patrick, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Murray. And a follow-up to Counselor McLook's comment, too. We don't want to be, as a municipality, in the affordable housing construction, because if we create a nonprofit, the funds that we actually get are reduced by 10%, right? So, they drop to 30%. But I just want to thank Josh very much for the report. Counselor Timmers and I both sit on the Affordable Housing Committee, and so we're very aware of the intricacies of this and, and, you know, helped, you know, Josh kind of work through this. And, you know, based on, one of the most important things is, is suitable land. And the second is, you know, the, the supports that the municipalities can bring towards an affordable housing build. Counselor Timmers and myself will be bringing forward a notice of motion at the next council meeting, kind of around this, and advocacy going forward to upper levels of government. So, Counselor McLook, you touched on a bunch of the things that are going to be coming, so I'm looking for your support on that. So, appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Murray.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Timmers. The Committee receive and file for information Report PD-10-25 regarding Affordable Housing Initiatives: Funding Implications on Timelines and Feasibility. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open that vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And the vote is now closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, confidential items, we have none. And item 10, committee remarks. Does, do we have any committee remarks this evening? Seeing none, there being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 8:47 PM. 7:47, my apologies. Yeah, it's a little late, isn't it? I don't know what time it is. I have no idea what time it is. It's done now.